Price, Brindley Price.
Mason.
Yay, another Jason. Flynn Rechner. You want to show them your painting?
Oh, cool. Thank you.
It is a fun duck.
Matthew Renick.
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 Next is Nola Reinhardt. You want to show us your painting? You want to turn around this way so these people can see what a wonderful job you've done. You want to turn around this way so these people can see what a wonderful job you've done.
Liam Spencer.
Wow. Chloe Rossman.
No, we got one more. I'm glad you're keeping us straight. Austin Tenner. You want this? Cool. Let's have a round of applause. And everyone who got an award, if you want to go over here in the next room, they'll be taking pictures.
And we think we still have, yeah, we still have a couple more awards, but we've got a lot here tonight. So if you want to start heading in to that side, side door and then families, there's another exit that way. So if you don't want to stay for the board meeting, you want to go to the play or watch March Madness, we'll never know.
Do we have Aubrey Nelson? Aubrey Nelson. Well. So you have been awarded Big Walnut Local School Board Student of the Month. Did you know that? Here's your award, and I'm going to read it just a little bit about you. Actually, could you tell me what grade you're in and who's your teacher?
Um, I'm in fourth grade and my teacher's Mr. Adams.
And your favorite subject?
Math.
Math? Okay. Aubrey Nelson represents GRA in the most positive way. Daughter of Leslie and Kevin Nelson, sister Michaela Nelson, her sister's in 10th grade. She comes to school with a smile on her face and remains that way throughout the day, working hard and being friendly to everyone. Aubrey is one of the few students this year who continually pushes herself to do her best with little prompting from a teacher. Last month, she completed all math and reading menu board items, which is above and beyond expectations. She has also passed 100 lessons on our Eye Ready Math Program and is close to meeting that goal in reading as well. Aubrey is a strong leader and her classmates often choose to partner with her when given the choice. We are fortunate to have Aubrey in our classes this year, and we are so proud of all you have accomplished. So I'd like to congratulate you, and I'd like to know if you have any parting words or words of wisdom for your classmates.
Uh, not really.
Well, congratulations, and that is yours to take home, and I'd like to congratulate you. It's okay. Thank you. Okay, we also have Claire Statler. Claire, this is what you did. Would you like to show everybody? And would you like to tell us about your artwork, how you came to that?
So, um, we were doing a project in art on, on the balloon festival. And I've been to a balloon festival before in, in St. Louis when I was like, I don't know, like three or something. And like, I know all, not all of the balloons are shaped the same, so just got the little bunnies.
Did you come up with that 3D design?
No, that was actually part of the project, but you know, it wasn't. The little people in the balloons as I put them in there.
Very cute, but we want to honor you for being named Art Student of the Month. The Big Walnut Local Schools hereby recognize this outstanding achievement. Your hard work and dedication reflects great credit upon yourself, the Big Walnut Local School District and the entire Big Walnut community. What do you think about that?
That's good.
Well, well, we are very appreciative. We think this is beautiful and you deserve this award. We'd also like to know if we could, um, put that up on our walls here for a little while.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, well, I have your award, and I'll trade you. Congratulations.
I find this to be interesting. I would like to ask Mr. Clausen to come up, please. Ethan Clausen. It's interesting to me, Mr. Clausen, because we go from Gemma V down to you with 30 days of school left. I'm glad to have you here with us today.
I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. Ethan is here, Mr. Clausen is here, uh, as we're recognizing him tonight for being Division Two All-Second Team Linebacker for the state of Ohio. Uh, I know that Ethan not only plays football, it's been very busy to try and get you here, sir, because you're, uh, a son to very proud parents and a sibling to two other students and 30 days to graduation, and I think that you also have committed to Ohio Dominican.
Yes, sir.
And you are a baseball player.
Yes.
With a batting average over 300.
Yes.
Yes, and you're known for kind of smashing the ball and hitting grand slams, right?
You could say so.
Yeah, I could say so. Well, I, I got that intel from the athletic director, so I just share that. But in all honesty, we really want to congratulate you and wish you the best in your future. 30 days remaining. Isn't that crazy?
It's crazy.
How did you pick Ohio Dominican?
So, um, of course. All right, location's important, I'm close to home, um, it's the cheapest, and I like the coaches. Uh, it's felt like the best fit, felt like home, and I think that I'm going to thrive in an environment like that, so.
And how about academically? What are you looking to study?
I want to go into exercise science. Uh, I'm pretty interested in becoming an athletic trainer, and that's something that I've been interested in for a while. So I think that going there and studying that will allow me to pursue that and be successful.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
And that'll take us to item number six, Superintendent's Report. Right?
Thank you and good evening. A good part of my report will be recognizing individuals and groups who have done amazing things at Big Walnut. First, I want to recognize Michelle Phillips, the driver of Bus 57. Uh, as you may know, Bus 57 was involved in a head-on collision on Monday afternoon. Uh, there were no students on the bus, uh, at the time of the accident, but that does not diminish the fact that she had to go through that experience. Uh, I had a chance to talk with her and watch the bus video, uh, and while I could not see exactly what she saw, uh, I was able to see how she reacted, kept her composure, and quickly communicated to dispatch the situation. I'm thankful that she is okay and look forward to when she is ready to return. Uh, one of our board members, Steve Fuji, has been selected to be a member of the Ohio School Boards Association Cabinet. Uh, the OSBA Cabinet meets with Ohio's State Superintendent and other policymaking bodies to discuss how policies and issues affect boards of education and public schools. I think it is great that Big Walnut will have a seat at the table in advocating for public education. Uh, I am confident I will be stealing other people's thunder on this one, but I want to congratulate Sophie, her coaches and teammates on winning a state title in their cheerleading division. Uh, I will be honest, it was the first cheerleading competition that I have attended. And when I was driving down Miller Lane and saw all the cars, I thought perhaps we were hosting the Carrie Underwood concert at Big Walnut. Uh, it was great to see them perform on that stage and to see the excitement when they learned of their accomplishment. So again, congratulations to you and your teammates. Uh, I also had the chance to witness our boys bowling team compete at the state tournament last Saturday. And while they did not achieve the results they may have hoped for, we are very proud of their efforts. Uh, Mr. Shelton and I were watching their match against North Canton Hoover, and one of our bowlers, Aiden Farakawa, had a perfect game going through five or six frames. Uh, and I've never been more nervous at a bowling alley. Well, maybe when I was in middle school, but that's another story. Uh, again, congrats to our bowling team and their coaches. Uh, I want to wish our middle school and high school students who are a part of the cast and crew of Matilda the best of luck. Tonight is their opening night, and there will also be shows Friday and Saturday evening. I was able to catch a sneak peek of their dress rehearsal yesterday, and it was very enjoyable. Uh, I want to draw your attention to a few items on the agenda this evening. Uh, item 11.4 is asking you to approve a budget adjustment in the amount of $16,000 to assist in the purchase of a grand piano for the high school Performing Arts Center. When the new high school was built, a new piano was eliminated due to budgetary needs. Mr. Porter approached me about a month ago to ask if there was anything the district could do. Uh, the music boosters had raised a considerable amount of money to go towards the purchase of a grand piano, but needed some financial assistance from the district. I met with Mr. Jenkins to see if there was anything we could do. As many people up here have stated, money, money is tight in this district. I tried to be fiscally responsible. Um, it was not a matter of magically finding $16,000. It had to have come from somewhere. I've said that before. Mr. Jenkins came back to me and said, "Well, you are currently doing or trying to do the job of Director of Facilities since Mr. Schwartz's departure last month. If you can do it for two months, there's the money." Uh, so that's how we found the $16,000, and I'm happy for the music department and the kids that will now have a piano that is suitable for that space. Uh, item 12.6 is the approval of Mike Robertson to be our new Director of Academic Achievement beginning next school year. Mr. Robertson is currently the principal of Hastings Middle School in Upper Arlington and went through quite a rigorous interview process. Ms. Foreman screened approximately 18 candidates by phone for our first round of interviews. We then invited, I believe, seven candidates to come in for a second round interview with a committee that included our Assistant Superintendent, various principals, and an instructional coach. From there, we brought two candidates back for a final interview that consisted of Mrs. Graziozi, Ms. Foreman, and myself. We had two very strong candidates, but in the end felt strongly that Mr. Robertson was the best choice. His ability to address our needs at the elementary level with early literacy in the science of reading, as well as his plans for making connections for our high school students with companies, covered our two biggest needs at this time. If you recall, up until this past summer, two people were employed in this position. And item 12.11 is our staffing plan for the 23-24 school year. Again, in trying to be as fiscally responsible as possible, while at the same time addressing the needs of our district, I think we have a plan that will be appropriate for us, and I will speak more to it once we get to that item. Finally, and this is one last recognition, and again, I'm going to steal a little bit of thunder from someone, but I want to thank Sheri Dursch for her service on the Board of Education. She will be making an announcement later this evening, but I just want to publicly thank her. While I have only been sitting in this seat for about nine months, I have been a resident and parent in this district for over eight years. I cannot think of many jobs that face more scrutiny than that of a school board member, especially in this day and age. However, on behalf of all of the staff of the Big Walnut Local School District, Mrs. Dursch, we thank you for your service and wish you nothing but the best of luck. And Mr. President, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Item number seven, Treasures Report. Darren.
Uh, yeah, I've got three items, um, uh, that I want to draw your attention to. The first is the monthly financials. You have the packet, um, in your board materials. Uh, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this particular item because, quite honestly, the variances that we have seen to date are holding, and they are primarily because of, uh, Mr. McLean's judicious addition of staff. Um, it is not, uh, consistent with, uh, what the original staffing plan was, and so therefore we're able to, um, recoup some dollars that otherwise would have been spent on personnel and associated costs. Second item, um, I want to talk about is, uh, our public records update that, uh, the board asks me to do every month. From the period of February 14th to March 14th, we had 10 new requests. All but one of those have been processed. Uh, we had, um, outstanding requests that were discussed, uh, last month and honestly, the last few months. Uh, and, uh, the associated legal fees for, for those requests were $41,161. The approximate time in answering the 10 requests that are new is about 24 hours, and that includes both my staff, myself, and the IT staff. Um, we, we believe the processes that we've put in place have streamlined, uh, our response time and have made things more efficient. Uh, I'd like to take just a minute to discuss the outstanding, uh, records request. Um, and, and quite honestly, I wanted the, the public and the board to be aware of their request before it's fulfilled. We had an anonymous request for all, direct reinformation of all of our students in the district. By code, the only thing that we can say, uh, and discriminate against the request is that we do not, um, so we do not give data out for profit-making venture. Um, the requester has assured us that it's, will not be used for profit-making, but that's all we have. Uh, we don't have a, uh, address. Uh, he wants, they want it delivered electronically. Uh, so everyone needs to understand that we have very little latitude under the law for meeting this request. So we're going to have over 4,200, uh, students, their names, their addresses, uh, grade level, uh, awards, uh, graduation date, those types of things go out to an entity that we don't have, we don't know who it is. Uh, obviously, that causes us great concern, given, um, the, you know, given society today. We, we don't know how they're going to be used, but, uh, we've consulted with, uh, uh, our, um, our legal advisors, uh, Mr. McLean is, has contacted our elected representatives to bring this to their attention. But as we sit here today, we have very little latitude except to respond to this request. Uh, wanted you all, as a board, to be aware of it, and I think the public needs to be aware of it. And, um, and honestly, our hands are tied, uh, in, in meeting that request.
I, I reached out to Senator Brenner on March 7th, uh, to make him aware of this. It falls in line with Ohio Vice Code 3319 dot 321. Uh, and, and I shared with him, and as Mrs. Nick said, pointed out in, in the last meeting, with, with the concerns over sex trafficking and our proximity to the interstate, we're going to hand over names, addresses of students to a person that is anonymous, and the law requires us to do that. So he said, uh, he would have his staff look into it and see what we can do, uh, so I'm, I'm waiting on an update from him.
Darren, what was the date of the request, the original request?
I think it was, um.
Just, was it in?
It was like February, uh, 27th, I want to say.
And, and Legal is saying that we have to submit.
Yes, there's no question.
Minor's information with address.
Yeah, if you look at our board policy, uh, our board policy defines directory information.
As does Vice Code.
Yes, as does Vice Code. And, um, we, we had a, a meeting with, uh, Legal today, a couple of attorneys, honestly, about what our options are. Our options are very limited. We have none at this juncture. We may have some more moving forward on how we define directory information. We may have some more moving forward on how we define directory information, but directory information is directory information. The only way that I have to refuse this request is if we're going to be used for profit-making. In the request, it clearly states that the information will not be used for profit and that's honestly, that's all I can ask for. I have no ability to ask for anything further.
I have a question legally. Can parents refuse to have their child's name listed publicly?
So the way this is, yes. Short answer is yes, but we, they can't now. To get around this request, every fall through Power School, we have a form that is an opt-out form for parents to fill out. And there's a directory information opt-out announcement in our student handbooks. So quite honestly, I don't think anyone foresaw this eventuality because typically, if a parent chooses not to allow their student to participate in directory information and the release of that information, then we don't have the latitude to put honor roll in the paper, to put, you know, Doug Crowell rushed for 100 yards in the football game, those kinds of things. We don't have the ability to do that. And so, in point of fact, most parents don't fill that out and they allow us to use their child's photograph and brag on them and those kinds of things.
And you've got the list compiled?
No, I've not, I've not pulled the data yet.
That was going to be my question. So we also, there's requirements around how and the creation of documents and whether or not we're required to create new documents to fulfill public records requests? I can imagine that some of that information is probably easily compiled, some of it not so much.
Well, the, Mr. Fuji, you are correct. We do not have to supply a, we do not have to supply data that does not already exist, okay?
Or create.
Create, yes. But in this instance, we have this data. And as you pointed out, statute, FERPA identifies what directory information is and as well as our board policy.
Well, my other wonder on this is many of our policies were written at a time where paper copies were printed and handed out. And actually, one of the discouraging factors to that would be if you were requesting, I don't know, 4,200 pieces of information and documentation, there was a printing fee associated with that. Like you would really have to want it at whatever the cents per page was. When somebody's requesting this, as we've seen in other public records requests, 40,000 emails or whatever those types of things were, the digital copy of that is not, I mean, the idea of printing those types of things out and there being a barrier of cost no longer exists.
That's correct.
That's concerning to me in terms of we're now generating just PDFs of these types of things and distributing it not only to potentially a community member, but maybe also somebody that we have no idea who it is and as you're saying, it's an anonymous source.
Correct.
These type, this is not unique to us. These types of things are happening across the country from public records requests, but I've not known any of them to necessarily be around student information. I find that deeply troubling.
I don't, I think it would be more fair to say that we don't hear about them.
Fair enough. I don't hear about them. You're right.
They do go wrong.
The request for emails and the request for information that we generate around policies or people, that's one thing. I understand the need to be clear about that. I don't understand the need that someone might have on an anonymous situation to be able to request student information at a directory level.
I share your concern, as does every member of this administrative team, as I'm sure you all do. Because, you know, those of you sitting around this table either have children or grandchildren in this district who will be affected by this. Quite honestly, that's why we administratively have attempted to do our due diligence before fulfilling this request. It doesn't set well with me either. The problem is we just don't have a whole lot of options.
So the definition, just so that we're clear, both on revised code and what's currently in our policy says, directory information includes student's name, address, telephone listing, date and place of birth, major field of study, part, this is the Mr. Crowell rushing for 300 yards example, participation in officially recognized activities in sports, weight and height information, members of athletic teams, dates of attendance, date of graduation, and awards received. We're not talking about somebody asking for our football roster. We're talking about somebody asking for all of our students.
Correct. Now, their original request was for specifically all the information that you just?
They want, they want student directory information.
And you haven't, do you have a timeframe on the completion of the file?
Honestly, pulling the data is not going to be difficult because everything is...
You've been checking on the, on the legal response?
Correct. That is...
Did they make a single, a single request?
Yes.
Okay, the, that would cost the district $500 for non-compliance if they took us to court. That's the fine. Correct? I'm not a lawyer. I play one sometimes, but I do believe that's the fine.
Well...
And I'd rather pay the fine.
And protect our students.
Then we need to go back to, that may be the state's fine, but I'm not sure what ramifications we have on the federal side.
I have a question about ramifications.
It's not controlled federal, is it?
Yeah. FERPA is federal.
Yeah.
FERPA doesn't allow them to get the records, does it?
Yeah, it does directory information.
Is that right?
Yeah. That's the problem. And honestly, I'm not disputing your $500 figure. What I want to double check and get some legal advice on is I don't want to put our, because I'm, I am on your team with regard to releasing this information. I don't want to do it either. But I also, if it's going to put our federal funds at stake, that's a whole different issue. And I want to double check that before we do anything.
I would like to know how liable are we going to be if something happens to a group of our students? Because some pervert had their identity followed them home and their parents never saw them again.
I understand where you're coming from, Mrs. Nick, but all I can tell you is that however reluctantly we are, we're running into roadblocks on denying that request based on Ohio revised code and federal statute.
When you have the conversation with Legal, the second question is, can we file for injunctive relief through federal court? And I would like to participate in the conversation.
Okay. We'll set up a conversation.
And thank you for bringing that to the attention of the board.
Well, I mean, as I say again, no one that works for the board that is aware of this request did that request set well with. I mean, I'm talking all of your senior administrative staff because we were involved in conversations with attorneys, not just one, more than one attorney today over this issue. So, you know, I want everyone in the room to understand that we take this request very seriously and we take the idea of student safety very seriously. That's why we are investigating every avenue before responding to this request.
Have any of the schools surrounding our school district had this request made?
In prior years, yes.
But do we know about this year?
I'm not sure, but I can reach out to the local superintendents on it.
Yeah.
Okay, last thing, House Bill 1. This, I really want to bring this to your attention, to everyone's attention regardless. And Mike, I will tell you right now, my comments are not meant to be biased or political in any nature. I just, I want to point out some things to you. House Bill 1 is a, and before, and let me say that.
This is on our agenda webpage as a public document, so you can get it. You can get everything the board has. In your board packet, you have several analyses of House Bill 1, but, and it's very complicated. The idea started in the General Assembly by trying to reduce the number of income tax brackets that we have and doing away with the homestead exemption on property taxes. Now, some of you may or may not know that the homestead exemption and rollback is actually paid by the state of Ohio back to locals so they don't lose property taxes. So in order to do that and do away with it, the idea has been moved forward that currently your assessed value, that is what you pay taxes on, is 35% of the market value of a piece of property. So what they're thinking about doing is reducing that 35% to 31.5%, which is what's in this column over here, okay? The assessed value at 35% and subsequently the proposed is 31.5%. Now, those values, the property values are coming straight from the Department of Taxation. They're our most recent property values. This is the issue. There's a, there's a piece of legislation that was passed in the mid-'70s called House Bill 920. And House Bill 920 is also now part of the Ohio Constitution. House Bill 920 in its form is really the reason why we have a full voted rate, which is in the third column, and the effective rates for Class 1 and Class 2, which is in the next two columns. What House Bill 920 does is reduces, whether it be a fixed rate levy or fixed sum levy or a bond, it reduces the millage paid so that it's an inflation fighter. You never pay any more than what was passed. That works on everything except inside millage. Inside millage, that's the only thing the district, over time, gets a bump on. Our inside millage, which is the first line, says General Fund 999 is 4.6 mills. So because House Bill 920 doesn't work on inside millage, it will not be adjusted should House Bill 1 pass in its present form. Therefore, if you look all the way to the right, there's a red number in parentheses of $513,000. That's what the district will lose annually if House Bill 1 passes. Now, some of you, some of the folks in the community may say, "Who cares? They got too much money anyway." This is the kicker and this is why everyone should be concerned. If you look at the bottom of this last column, it says increased Class 1 taxpayer due to the House Bill 920 adjustment. As I said, what typically has happened since 1975 is that millage has been adjusted down to bring in the same amount of money because your property values are going up. What will happen if House Bill 1 in its present form passes will be the inverse of that. So 920 will still be in effect, but it's going the other direction, okay? This is why you should care. Because the citizens and the property owners in the Big Walnut School District are going to pay almost 2.26 million dollars more in property taxes for us, for the school district to receive $513,000 less. That's what you need to know about and that's why I think this is so important.
So two things, Mr. Jenkins, from me. Item one, thank you very much for taking time today to speak to me about this topic so that I would have a better understanding. I think the last point that you made is probably the most, if it were to pass, important point, that we would actually pay more in taxes and the district, as a citizen, we would pay more in taxes and as a district, we would see less of that money. That, which to me means that that money is going elsewhere, not to our students, not to our community schools, but to another place. The second thing that I would say is, is a pretty complex topic. We're going to talk about inside mills. Normally, those types of discussions are held for when there's a levy or a bond campaign going. I happen to know firsthand that you sat with some community members and had a conversation to explain the district finances. I've been one of the people raising flags and questions and I want to commend you for spending that amount of time talking with our citizens and doing that. And I would encourage anyone, because you don't only do public records, you also will talk about our district's finances and explain what is going on. So this is a pretty complex topic. You spent 40 minutes with me on the phone today talking it through. I would invite other citizens maybe to have that conversation with you so that it's not just in a board meeting where they're hearing this. This would be very detrimental, not only to me as a taxpayer and a citizen, but also to our school district.
Right. And I think that's, that's key. As a taxpayer, regardless of how you feel about the Big Walnut Local School District, as a taxpayer, right?
Whereas at least if we were putting an issue on the ballot, I get a say and get to voice my opinion about our school district in that moment, but the idea that we would just lose money and it be legislatively driven, not driven by a vote of our taxpayers is worrisome.
It is in hearings now. To be very, I'm going to be very politically incorrect and say that the legislator who introduced it, I don't believe really understood what 920 was and what it would do. And I really don't think that was the intent, but I think it's going to be very difficult for the legislature to remedy that intent given the fact that House Bill 920 has been in effect since the mid-'70s and is now part of the Ohio Constitution. If it were just Ohio revised code, it could be changed, but you know, that's going to be a more difficult process.
Well, two points. First point, I know they take, when it's in committee, they'll take people who want to come in and speak.
Yes.
Check and see what the stats is with the local. Second is, do you think it would benefit the community to put on a, and would you want to put on a town hall? Most people don't understand, at least to start.
Right, I understand.
But you're capable of putting it in more basic terms?
Yeah, yeah.
To just have a presentation.
And I don't have a problem doing that if that's something you believe would be worthwhile. The conversation that Mr. Fuji spoke about, honestly, we began the conversation with, you know, what is a mill? And went from there and we really just talked about school finance, you know, and how it's calculated and what it, because there's a lot, and it is a complex issue. And there's a lot about it, as I would argue this is, is counterintuitive. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but it is what it is. And that's one of the most frustrating pieces, is that it doesn't make a lot of sense sometimes. It is counterintuitive and unless you can begin to have those types of conversations with folks, it's hard for that to be digestible.
Two additional statements.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the inside millage was established in like 1930.
Yes, you're right. Yes, you're right. Absolutely. And it's finite and you can't get any more of it and, yeah, absolutely. And I can tell you, the way we got 4.6 mills is when this district consolidated, okay? Because every, every district has a little bit. But when Big Walnut became Big Walnut, we got to inherit everybody's. Yes.
When Harlem came in and created the Sunbury.
Yes.
Or went from Sunbury to Big Walnut. I'll add further comments.
Okay.
I didn't actually mean to interrupt. I thought your comments were done. Sorry, sir. One is, I certainly endorse the idea of the town hall, but would just acknowledge that we also have a financial committee or finance committee that we've utilized in this district in the past. So my comment first is kind of related to that. It might be time to, now that both of you have kind of been established in your spots, it might be time to kind of reinstitute that finance committee, number one. And number two, I really like the work of having the conversation when we have nothing to ask for. We're not asking for something right now, but we have our eye on the ball, and the fact that we are being at every turn detrimentally impacted is, again, is something that we just need to continue to show or demonstrate. So it's not only the side of fiscal responsibility in terms of what we do have, it's also the future focus on where we need to go and what options are available to us in terms of the things that are happening. Thank you, Darren.
That's all I got. I think that's enough for tonight.
Yes, more than what I thought you had. Item number eight, Selective Board Policies. The Ad Hoc Committee met with Neola again and made substantial progress. I think we have another meeting scheduled, do we not? Lengthy process. Item number nine, Board Members' Items of Interest, and we'll start down there.
Thank you. So recently at the high school, we obviously, district-wide, we have started the last quarter of the school year. Yeah. We've started the last quarter of this school year, and I know many students are excited to have done so, and many students have finished scheduling for the upcoming twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year as well. The seniors are currently completing their career shadowing days. This is an amazing opportunity we have and is a requirement in order for us to graduate, where we get to shadow someone in the career field that we're interested in, and we get to learn from those who are currently in our future professions. We're also busy applying for various scholarships as well. The juniors took the ACT on February twenty-eighth, and I hope that went well for everyone, and state testing is going to take place at the end of April, and best of luck to all the students involved in state testing. As for athletics, on March eleventh, our boys bowling team competed at the D one O H S A A State Championship, and they placed ninth in state, so congratulations to the bowling team. Senior pole vaulter Macy Ames competed at the O A T C C C Track and Field Championships and placed third in state. She broke her own personal record and the school record, vaulting twelve feet and three inches, which is quite incredible, and I'm so proud of her. Brody Chapman, Logan Lang, Cameron Long, and Eli Lengel also competed and placed fifth in the four-by-four at this state meet as well, so congratulations to all of these athletes. For, as far as the game day cheer team, I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to have competed at our school and to have hosted the competition. I just wanted to extend my gratitude to all of our janitorial staff. They did such an amazing job. There were so many people packed in that school, and there was so much trash, and they were constantly cleaning, and so I'm so grateful for them, and they were so supportive of us as well. Also, a great shout out to all of our community volunteers and our student volunteers that really helped us put on this event, and to Mrs. Shurkey for all of her hard work in the concession stand. She really does a lot, and thank you to all of our administration for allowing us to do that. So thank you to all the community support as well. I also wanted to extend a good luck to all of our spring sports as our seasons are starting up. Boys volleyball has a match tonight against Saint Charles. The boys and girls lacrosse teams have their first games this Saturday against Gehanna Lincoln. The boys' team is home and the girls' team's away, and baseball and softball both have their first games on March twentieth. And currently, Matilda is being performed at our high school. I know everyone worked really hard in preparation for these performances, and so I'm very excited to see my peers tomorrow perform. The candidates for the National Honor Society are completing and turning in their applications, and so we're looking forward to their induction on April sixteenth. And then our theme for prom this year was recently announced, and that is going to be a red carpet theme, and it will be held at the Iron Gate Equestrian Center again this year, and that is on April twenty-second from eight to eleven P M. This past, yesterday actually, Student Council arranged a nice, like a little Sunday bar for all of our teachers, because we wanted to express our appreciation for all of the hard work that our teachers do and their compassion and passion for their jobs and for all of their students, and we also arranged to, so that each teacher would receive two letters written by some of their students, and so we're very thankful for them, and we're glad we're able to express our appreciation for them, and also a big thank you to Newman Roofing, who helped sponsor this project that we've been working on for the past month. We're also planning on having another Inspire Day sometime soon in April. This will take place during Eagle Time period, and Inspire Day is basically a period in which all the teachers can host whatever they would like to teach and whatever interests them, a fun activity or a class in their room, and students can pick one classroom to attend, and this will be on April twenty-sixth. And then also, we're working on arranging to have class officer applications for the upcoming school year, and so we're hoping to get them elected soon as well. And so that's all I have for tonight, and thank you all for your time, and I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable spring break.
Hey, as Mr. McLean alluded to, I have submitted my resignation from the board. I was actually just going to go ahead and kind of read my letter so that no one would have to make a public records request to see what I said, hopefully, save Mr. Jenkins just a minute or two. So I submitted this letter to the board earlier this week in basically stating, please let this letter serve as my official resignation from the Big Walnut Local Schools Board of Education, effective March seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. That's tomorrow. I have sold my home in the Big Walnut School District, effective the state, and will be moving outside of the district. As such, I am no longer qualified to serve as Board of Education Member, effective tomorrow. When my first child started at Big Walnut E L C back in two thousand and eight, I was amazed by Big Walnut Local Schools and almost immediately felt so connected with its mission and vision that I began to consistently volunteer in the district. In twenty twenty, when I began my role as a member of the Board of Education, I was proud to be part of that mission and vision and was confident in the direction the district was moving. Unfortunately, three years later, I have serious concerns about the focus of the board and the direction it is setting for the district. From where I sit, it seems as though the focus is being heavily influenced by partisan politics and national culture wars and not what is in the best interest of the staff and the students of the district. There's a tremendous amount of work to be done to prepare this district for the future, but instead of focusing on facilities, funding, and the foundations of education, the majority of the time is being spent focused on the complaints of a handful of community members and removing innovation and autonomy from the professionals that we have hired. I respectfully request that the board be mindful of the lack of experience and institutional knowledge on this body, and seriously consider as my replacement any potential candidate that may come forward with prior Board of Education experience. I know that there are several former members in our community, and while I don't know if any of them would consider stepping up to fill the remaining nine and a half months of my term, I think it would be foolish not to seriously consider any who may have that interest. If that is not an option, I have long said that a good candidate for the Board of Education role is someone who is a quick reader with excellent reading comprehension, someone who believes in lifelong learning, and someone who has the ability to be impartial in decision-making. Please do not disregard that the best boards are made up of a diverse group of individuals who bring different life experiences and skill sets to the table. I wish the best for all of the staff and students of this district. Sincerely, Sheri Dorsch. So I do want to thank everyone on the administrative team. It's, you know, definitely been a pleasure to work with everyone. I think, I think the staff and administration of this district does an extraordinary job, definitely makes the most of the resources available, and I know that you are all capable of doing amazing things for the students of this community, so thanks.
First, I want to thank Mr. Fuji. He gave us all a book back in the earlier part of the school year, The Energy Bus, and I read it and so liked it that I ordered the energy bus for kids and had the opportunity during Read Across America to read that book to the children at Souders Elementary, and just got a whole stack of wonderful notes written by the children, how much they enjoyed the book. So it's a great book. Thank you, Mr. Fuji, for sharing that, and if any of you here have not read it, I highly recommend it for students as well as adults. I also want to thank you, Mr. McLean, for the piano. Having taught music for nine years, I was thrilled to hear we have a nice grand piano now that the students and the teacher can enjoy, so thank you for making that happen. Congratulations to our cheerleaders. I think that is so exciting, and I'm sure that that was a thrill that you folks have enjoyed for several days since, so congratulations. And to Sheri, I wish you the best of luck with your move and hope all goes well in your new community.
I hate to also want to express the pleasure that I was able to have reading at Souders during the Read Across America. I was able to go into several classrooms, and it was a joy to see the children and be with the, talk to some of the staff and just get a real sense of their love that they have for their, the children and the teaching, and it was a wonderful opportunity. I want to thank our administrative staff for the availability that they have given to me for any questions that I've had, their transparency and their honesty and hard work and dedication for this school, and that is it.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Alice, for sharing that. I actually want to recognize Mr. Ross Lynn Scott. He handed those books out to the administrative team, and I thought if our administrators were maybe reading some good books, that maybe we would do the same. So I appreciate that statement. To you, Sheri, we were elected together. I didn't know you before that moment. I have certainly enjoyed our time on this board together and getting to know you. I appreciate the integrity by which you have served. I appreciate the heart of a servant that you have spent time and effort and energy kind of doing. I know this doesn't come at a, as an easy decision, maybe for you and your family, and I'll simply look forward to seeing you at graduation as your oldest daughter graduates this year. Thank you.
And I would like to thank you, because I can tell, sitting in this seat, believe me, it's a difficult position to be in for any board member. It's a task that people truly can't appreciate until you're sitting here, and I would like to thank you for the added help on the Treasurer Ad Hoc Committee, and I already gave you the button. With the resignation of a board member, the board's required to replace within thirty days, very tight timeframe. So we will open up, and I believe, Ryan, you can correct me, there's no real good policy definition on how we go about taking applications or, it really doesn't address it until we get to the final stages, does it not?
So our current policy says the board shall take the following, the board should...
Our current policy says the board shall take the following steps to fill the vacancy. The board shall seek qualified and interested candidates from the community through the news media, word of mouth, and contacts with appropriate organizations. All applicants are to submit a notice of their interest in writing to the superintendent or treasurer. Appointment by the board to fill a vacancy shall be by majority vote of the remaining members of the board.
I believe when this was done in the past, there was a letter submitted to the central office.
It was submitted to central office in a unmarked envelope, which was opened by the board president, I believe, at the time. I would submit that the best way to handle it is, first, we need to, I would make a motion from the floor to accept the resignation. That puts it in the record of the board.
I guess I could second. You made the motion, I could second.
Darren.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch? Uh, Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
And then I would say that we open up for...
Actually...
You got a question?
No, it says applicants are to submit a letter of notice in writing to the superintendent and treasurer.
Well, we were discussing how it happened before, but that's fine.
No, I, yeah, right. That wasn't an intent to correct anything. It was, I found out.
No, no, I understand. It also doesn't give a timeframe. Thirty days it has to be done or a judge will. So I will lay, I will lay out for discussion a timeframe. Applications may be submitted as early as tomorrow to the twenty-seventh of March.
That's spring.
That would be...
Monday of spring break. That'd be a full week.
Which is another issue and problem. I will, do we want them to go to the treasurer? Do we want them to go to the superintendent? Why don't we make it central office?
How about, how about we make it the superintendent? Our treasurer currently is still in interim. I'm hoping we'll have a conversation and rectify that shortly, but we have a permanent superintendent. I would say send it to the superintendent.
That's fine.
How do we publish?
Well, we need to put it on the...
Website.
District's website. We're publishing it right now as far as notice, at which time on the twenty-seventh, I'll meet up with you, Ryan, and collect the applications. I will send the applications to the board members digitally. The spring break is that week and the following week, I believe, somewhere after the ninth of April, depending on the number of applications. We will determine special meetings to do interviews. I can tell you, the last time we had to fill a seat, there were thirteen applicants. The way we're going to narrow it down, we're going to interview all applicants.
So just, just for, for your information, thirty days is Saturday, the fifteenth of April, so we have to have a new person appointed prior to or on Saturday, April fifteenth?
Correct.
Just...
It's going to require... It's going to require, depending on the number of applicants, the interviews will be done in executive session because they can be. But if you allowed 30-minute interviews for six candidates, that's a three-hour meeting, so it's possible to have between four, three and four meetings. Depends on the response, actually.
Yeah, that's actually what I was going to wonder.
We won't set the meetings until we have...
Right, right, right. But I could imagine the interest maybe being greater than it was the last time this board had a situation like this.
I was asked the question of that and it can be from one.
Right.
I hope it's not none.
No, I don't imagine that.
To, you know, a number.
I, I would probably err on the over on that conversation. But if the applicants are due, and this was going to be my only point to that, if the applications would be then due on the 27th, is what I think you said, so open it up, notices provided now, they could submit letters from essentially now till, did you say the 20, Monday to 27th?
Seventeenth to the 27th at noon.
Perfect. Then that would give us, that's the week that spring break is occurring, then we would come back. You could potentially start thinking about when special meetings could occur on April 3rd, not the 9th. That was my...
No, there was a re, what was the reason, Ryan, for the 9th?
Uh, is, I believe that's Easter, that's Easter weekend? So, we've got, we've got school the 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th, off the 7th and off Monday, the 10th.
So, I felt that to push it past the 9th would be better.
Why, I guess the only thing that I would caution you on is if we have 100 people, you're not going to get 100 interviews in in five days.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, if we get to it.
I guess that's why I'm saying let's not commit to, we're going to do the interviews in a four-day...
My hope is that we can interview everybody individually, in person. That was not done the last go around.
No, I, I completely get where you're coming from.
And I had issues with that. So, uh, and can IT set up a specific email address for digital application?
I think we just said send it to you.
So, are we, are we doing digital or does it have to be in writing?
I'm, I'm trying to get it either or.
Okay.
But where do we send it if it's digital?
I, I would, I would say to my email address.
It's not going to get lost.
Well, I, I get a, I get 100 emails a day, but I will...
Pay attention till the 27th.
I will make sure I sort through those.
Everybody good with that? Item 10, public participation. Darren, did we have anybody that wanted to talk?
Yep, we've got, we've got five folks.
Five?
Yep. First up is Leanne Carr.
First, I'd like to thank Mrs. Dorsch for her service on the board. Oop, and I lost my thing. And say that you've made me nothing but proud to have voted for you. Good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about a book that was banned in the 80s when I was growing up and the effect it had on me. I'm sure many of you my age remember the book, Are You There God, It's Me, Margaret, by Judy Blume. It's about a 12-year-old girl who is starting puberty and all the beautiful and confusing things that come with it. In the 80s, it was banned in several schools for its depiction of menstruation and sexuality and some said it was pornography. Sound familiar? Fortunately, in my Catholic school, it was not banned and because of all the hubbub about the book, I just had to check it out in my library. I was 10 years old and the girls around me were starting to go through the changes mentioned in the book and pretty much all of them were excited to read it too. I'd love to know how many times that book was checked out over the course of the next few years. I'm sure I checked it out at least five times. When puberty started for me, I was ready. Not only had I read the book multiple times, but I had very loving parents who had helped me prepare for the changes my body was going through. I remember it was exciting and scary, but for some reason also embarrassing. I was embarrassed by what my body was doing, by something I had no control over because a group of people had told, told me it was so inappropriate, we shouldn't learn about it. It stuck in my mind that there was something wrong with what my body was doing. Fast forward to today and I still hide the pads and tampons that I'm buying underneath my other groceries. I pick a checkout lane with a female cashier and bagger. Even though I never met a person who tried to ban or even objected to the book, their actions had an impact on me. Now, here I am, looking at you, the school board, some of you who have made statements that can make some of the students you are supposedly here to serve feel embarrassed or ashamed for being who they are. Your decisions on whether a book is removed from our libraries will tell these kids whether or not they are worthy to have a voice in this world. I am here to ask you to choose your words and actions wisely and stop making people embarrassed for being who they are. And to the people who are trying to remove the voices of these kids through these books, you say you're trying to protect them, but what you're really doing is hurting them. You're telling the kids that can relate to these books that they shouldn't exist in your kid's world. No book is for everyone, but every book is for someone. And finally, to the kids whose lives are represented in this book, remember 35 years ago, they tried to remove Are You There God, It's Me, Margaret and tell me it was shameful to be a woman, but they couldn't silence us and there are many people in this community that won't let your voices be silenced. You are just as important as any other kid in the district and I'm glad you're here.
Mindy Pankey?
Good evening. In 2004, the law changed to allow exemptions for explicit and obscene materials to be used in schools. Since then, we've seen a huge shift towards earlier sexualization of children across the country through comprehensive sex ed and literature. I recently attended a seminar about human trafficking globally and right here in Delaware County. Ohio is ranked fourth in the nation for trafficking. Global trafficking expert Young B. Dale explained that only 3% of victims are actually kidnapped. The remaining are trafficked through gaming, social media, and mostly from people they know or come to know. What caught my attention was the discussion of the sexualization of our teens and how pornography is driving force behind trafficking. Mrs. Dale went on to say that this sexualization is happening in schools and we now know that it is. Since the law changed, librarians and teachers have a free pass to provide and discuss sexual topics with our children. There is a connection that was made, not only by Mrs. Dale, but in large and growing amounts of research. For some, not all, reading sexually explicit literature can create curiosity to look something up that they may not, that they may have read in the book. We know they create mental images of what they think they've read, but there will be some who turn to the internet to verify or simply look out of curiosity. The research also states there is a slight addictive difference between reading explicit literature and watching it online. But for some, both can lead to the following. Sexually permissiveness, risky behaviors, experimentation, reclusiveness, dominant and aggressive sexual behavior, confusion, and unrealistic expectations about sex, shame, low self-esteem, negative body image, anxiety, depression, normalizing deviant behavior, desensitization, and addictive and escalated pornography use. Thus, we say explicit obscene books aren't harmful to children, but they can be. Until we acknowledge it, some may fall into these horrific crimes. Why are we even taking this chance? Why do we, how do we know this scenario hasn't happened to anybody who has been in any of these schools in the past? This isn't about censorship. If it was, the schools would be filled from floor to ceiling with every book known to man. This is a moral and ethical issue and I implore you to clean house, bring books of virtue, books that teach and encourage students what to do and not what not to do. Speak is now in the hands of the board and I want it to be known on public record. I proved the rubric for vetting books is not acceptable in a number of ways. Despite the content, one thing that really stood out to me was that Speak has a Lexile level of 690, a third grade reading level, which means it checks the box for comprehension and everything else on the state standards. Thank you.
Barb Shelby?
Good evening. Back in 2010, as a levy campaign was going on in the district, the treasurer for the ABC Committee, the Action to Benefit Children, had to step down. The chair of the committee was seeking help and someone recommended Sherri Dorsch for the role. In the spirit of support for the school district and its future and as a community-minded citizen and knowledgeable professional, Sherri accepted the challenge and remained in that position for numerous years. Based on her selfless commitment and extensive experience with many aspects of the Big Walnut District, she became an obvious choice when there was an open seat on the Board of Education in the election of 2019. As an elected member of the board, she has provided in-depth knowledge of the day-to-day functioning of the schools where her children attended, along with an awareness of the responsibilities of a board member to present, represent, and provide for the district as a whole, every one of its students. Her financial expertise contributes to thoughtful decision-making for the fiscal health of the district, including her position on the Finance Committee. She has been part of the Academic Advisory Committee and a strong advocate for the wide variety of co- and extracurricular activities that broaden the learning opportunities for all of our students. During difficult and turbulent times for Big Walnut local and education at all levels, Sherri has served as an intelligent voice of reason with students always remaining front and center. In filling her role as a school board member, as recommended by the Ohio Board of, Ohio School Board Association, she has a positive and responsible liaison between the district and the community, demonstrating her passion for high-quality public education through her words and actions. Many, many thanks, Ms. Dorsch, for your tireless dedication to Big Walnut students, employees, and our community. You've made a meaningful contribution of time, energy, and thoughtful decisions and it's hoped that your example and legacy will live on. Thank you.
Adrian Moyer?
It's Adrian, but it's spelled Adrian, so we're good. Okay, thank you for having me. I wanted to come up here tonight. I am, my family and I have only been up here about two and a half years in Big Walnut. Came up from Westerville where we had the kids in a small, private Christian school. So, coming to Big Walnut, throwing our kids into public school was very scary, but I'm very pleased to say we've had a great transition. We couldn't be happier with the teachers, the school district as a whole. We're, we're having a fantastic experience. Today, I'm talking about my eldest, who is a sophomore at the high school. And in particular, last year, she participated on the track and field team and was coached by Coach Boyd. We've learned recently, he was asked to leave the district, banned from school grounds, and I wanted to come here today and express my deepest appreciation of him as a coach. I know, you know, some things are HR issues and we can't know everything, but what I know of Coach Boyd is he took my daughter, who'd never thrown, shot, put, and disc. He taught her how to throw. He encouraged her to be better. Every meet, she competed and she did a PR. And because of his dismissal, she's not on the track team this year, which is disheartening for me. From what I hear, what happened with Coach Boyd, it was at a high level, some inappropriateness. I don't believe this to be true, at least not with my daughter, but I ask, as a district and a board, if a coach is accused of inappropriateness or a teacher, because my daughter was also in chemistry this year, I understand some things can't be disclosed, but there's less than 10 girls on the throwing team. No one came to us, asked us our opinion. Or if you're here for the safety of students, why was I not told? Why was I not said, hey, you might want to have a conversation with your daughter? So, I would really love to know what our policies are as far as accusations to, to teachers, to coaches. We need to make sure we're making the right decisions based on accusation. So, I again want to thank Coach Boyd for everything he did. He was here for over 30 years and I know he impacted a lot of students. In my last 30 seconds, I want to talk about that data release. That was awfully frightening that you can give up our kids' information, height, weight, birthday, that's crazy. So, I think there's not a member in the community, both sides, that think this is a good idea. So, I please ask if you come to parents, let us know what we can do, who do we need to write to? Do we need to take the fine and spend that money blocking this until we figure it out? But off of Interstate 71, that is terrifying. I have two daughters and a son. So, please, please, keep us parents informed on how we can help with that situation. Thank you.
Paul Pankey?
Good evening. Thank you guys for listening to what I have to say. The choice of teaching material and books allowed in the library is a material failure by this board. Albeit a previous board, this truly is a board issue. There's absolutely no oversight by this board of what books are being introduced and stocked for minor consumption in the school libraries. Furthermore, it is my belief, the board approves and has approved curriculum without actually knowing what the curriculum was made of. Otherwise, we wouldn't be having these debates today. Instead of continually playing defense of your decisions, I implore you to take a proactive stance by requiring books entered into the school library to be approved by this board prior to introduction. I would also ask that you take your job of curriculum approval serious and thoroughly understand what you are approving. It is your responsibility to do your due diligence upfront, not after the material has already been implemented. I want to tell you guys, I appreciate, I know you're taking heat every day, both sides. And I just want to tell you, thank you so much, but it's time to take a proactive stance. We're, we're trying to get something out. We need to figure out how to stop it from getting in in the first place. And right now, the faucet's running, so we can get one out at a time, but it's flowing as fast as it can, filling it back up. So, it doesn't matter how many books pornography we remove, there's 10 more coming right after it. So, thank you for your time.
That's it?
Thank you. I have number 11, business items. 11.1, it is recommended board approve following new activity account, P R E R, 300-9416.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
11.2, it is recommended board approve value credit plus tuition and fees, school district, book process memorandum of understanding between Columbus State Community College and Big Walnut Local School District.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
11.3, it is recommended board approve the license and subscription agreement between Power School and Big Walnut Local School District effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Eleven point four, it is recommended the board approve a budget adjustment in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars to go towards the purchase of the grand piano for the Big Walnut High School Performing Arts Center.
So moved.
Second.
Darren, when you're ready.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Eleven point five, it is recommended the board approve the following donations. Fifteen hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-one cents donated to BW FFA. Donated by the BW FFA boosters. Big Walnut Ha- Big Walnut High School FFA Fund, two hundred nine three three zero. Four thousand dollars donated to the Big Walnut Local School District, donated by Neighborhood Bridges Principals Fund, zero one eight dash nine zero zero one, nine zero zero two, nine zero zero three, nine zero zero four, nine zero zero five, nine zero zero six, nine zero zero eight, and nine zero zero nine.
So moved.
Second.
Darren?
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Item eleven point six, it is recommended the board approve the following extended field trips. Girls' track and field, April fourteen through fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three, Parkersburg South Invitation. Should that not say Invitational? In West Virginia. Three Big Walnut students and three staff members, going on the honors flight mission, one-two-one, on May the fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Darren?
Uh, before you take the role-
Yes.
Mr. McClain, can you speak a little bit about the Honor Flight?
Yeah, so, uh, our district and our, uh, members who are very involved and active in our Purple Star efforts. Uh, so, uh, Kim Castiglione, uh, Kobe Donahue, uh, and there are others. They just, our, our building principals do such a great job supporting it, our families, our, our students, it's, it's just totally a group effort. I can't take credit for anything with that. They literally do it all and, and have run it just tremendously. Uh, and because of their efforts, uh, and recognition, not only from this community and military families in this community, but, uh, it's been taken notice from those outside. Uh, we were, uh, we were presented with the opportunity to, uh, participate in an Honor Flight. Uh, so we've got three students and three staff members that will be, uh, flying to Washington DC for the day, spending the day with some, some veterans, um, and, and then flying back later on that evening. Um, I've, I've never been a part of one. I've, I've talked to several people who, who have, and it's just an amazing experience. So, again, we're, we're proud of our military families. I am personally proud of our staff and administration for their work on that uh, and for the experience that three of our students are going to have. I believe one of them's here tonight, uh, in the audience, and then three of our staff members. It's, it's just going to be tremendous.
Thank you, Mr. McClain.
Darren?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Item twelve, Human Resources. All HR items are pending receipt of successful background checks, verification of experience, and completion of all necessary documentation. Twelve one. It is recommended the board approve the attached memorandum, memorandum of understanding between Big Walnut School District, Board of Education, and O P C S K M E Local Four, A F L C I O, and its Local Five Twenty-Four regarding the stipend in lieu of Health Savings Account Deposit.
So moved.
Second.
Any explanation needed on that?
Uh, the contract with that association specifies the board, uh, puts a set amount in an HSA. Uh, we have a few employees in that association that don't qualify, uh, for an HSA, so this will, uh, put that money in an FSA, uh, so that those individuals get the stipend.
Darren?
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point two, it is recommended the board approve a classified contract for Isabel Mochler, Souter's Teaching Assistant, Step Zero, effective February twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Darren?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point three, it is recommended the board approve the following resignations. Jordan Blosser, Souter's second-grade teacher, effective at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Nicole Hall, Big Walnut High School Food Service Worker, effective February twenty-eight, twenty-three, pending board approval, hire as the Big Walnut High School Head Cook. Deborah Morganstern, Bus Driver, effective at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, due to retirement. Samantha Rogers, Big Walnut Middle School, E L A, effective at the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Lynette Green, Bus Driver, effective at the end of the day on March twenty-one, twenty-two. Isabel Mochler, uh, Souter's Teaching Assistant, Step Zero, effective February twenty-eight, twenty-three. Chris Schaefer, Big Walnut Middle School District Custodian, Second Shift, effective at the end of the day on March the nineteenth, twenty-three, pending board approval, hire as Maintenance Personnel. Leslie Kennel, grade, Big Walnut Fourth Grade Teacher, effective March thirty-one, twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Certainly, thanks to all of these folks for all of their service, but specifically Mrs. Morganstern, who's been a longtime driver here, appreciate her. And then both of my kids had Mrs. Kennel. The idea that she had two sons graduate from here, her daughter graduated from here. She's been a longtime educator here. Just can't say thank you to her enough, uh, not only for the service to this district, but also helping to grow my children. Sure was a struggle at times. I'm talking about my kids, not the other ones.
And Dobros, welcome to the seven-day weekend that I enjoy now. She graduated the year before me. Darren?
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point four, it is recommended the board approve Nicole Hall, Big Walnut High School Head Cook, that current step continuing contract to remain in effect, pending successful completion of ninety-day probationary period effective beginning March one, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
When ready, Darren.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point five, it is recommended the board approve the following classified contracts. Rick Essex, big BWI Teaching Assistant, Step Seven, effective March thirteen, two thousand and twenty-three. Katrina Redfox, Big Walnut High School Teaching Assistant, Step Zero, effective April three of twenty-three. Tyler Schuster, GRE Teaching Assistant, Step Zero, effective March thirteen of twenty-three. Chad Woodward, Maintenance Ninety-Day Contract, Step Five, two sixty days, effective April three, twenty-three. Chris Schaefer, Maintenance, Step Six, effective March twenty, twenty-three. Current contract remains in effect.
So moved.
Second.
When ready, Darren.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point six, it is recommended the board approve a two-year, two-sixty-day administrative Level One contract for Michael Robertson, Director of Academic Achievement, one hundred and seven thousand annual salary, effective August one of twenty-three, with five extended days at his daily rate.
So moved.
Second.
Darren, when ready.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Evette Stane.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point seven, it is recommended the board approve the following revisions. Patty Malone, GRE Food Service, revised from two-point-five hours a day to five hours a day, effective March one of twenty-three. Kim Fashin, Bus Mechanic, revised from four hours a day to three hours a day, effective March eight, twenty-three. Kim Ischler, Big Walnut High School Head Cook, revised retirement to resignation as of the end of twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Rita Pavok, Girls Lacrosse, Big Walnut High School, rescind the supplemental contract. Jake Malik, Boys Lacrosse, Big Walnut High School, revised from point-five to one contract. Courtney Palmer, Girls Lacrosse, Big Walnut High School, revised from a half to a full contract. Doug Gurman, Big Walnut High School Assistant Te- Tennis Coach, revised from Step Two to Step Three.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point eight, it is recommended the board approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following staff. Lindsay Pellington, Big Walnut Middle School Science Teacher, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Michelle Nelson Sherborn, Big Walnut High School Teaching Assistant, March twenty-two, twenty-four of twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve point nine, it is recommended the board approve the following athletic volunteer supplemental contracts for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Audrey Logue, Girls Lacrosse, Big Walnut High School. Robert Ebride, Big Walnut High School, Boys Volleyball. Craig Prim, Big Walnut High School, Track.
So moved. Second.
When ready, Darren.
Mrs. Graciussi?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsch?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Nix?
Yes.
Ms. Ernst?
Yes.
Twelve ten, it is recommended the board review and discuss the report, reporting structure of the proposed Business Manager Position. No. Second?
Second.
Discussion, a little out of order. I brought up a Business Manager's Position that we would need to look at, uh, implementing. We lost our Facilities Director in February. In lieu of looking for a Facilities Director, I have the belief that we would be better served to have a Business Manager. This question is that if we create the position of a Business Manager under statute, they can either report directly to the Superintendent, or they can report to the Board.
So what you got?
Oh, I'm sure it's in here somewhere. Thoughts on the, the Business Position first, before we decide on who they report to? Come on, people.
Was there a job description attached?
Pardon? No, I don't think there can be a job description attached until there's a, to whom to report to. Otherwise, it will be Doug Swartz's previous job description.
Does the role change depending on who?
Yes, I would say significantly.
Yes, if, if the Business Manager reports to the Board, the Board picks the Business Manager. If the Business Manager reports to the Superintendent, the Superintendent nominates to the Board for approval.
But what does this person do?
Um, I'm looking up my paper amongst many. Thought I had it right on top. Oh, I know why it's not in there. Because it's not in there.
You had it here where you could easily find it.
Exactly.
Mrs. Dorsch, you seem to be in unusually good mood cracking jokes. Why is that?
Bright outlook, correct? Business Manager, powers and duties, uh, Ohio Revised Code, three-three-one-nine. Point oh-four, the Business Managers have the care and custody of all property of the school district, real or personal, except monies. Supervise the construction of buildings and the process of erection and the maintenance, operation, and repairs thereof. Advertise for bids and purchase and have custody of all supplies and equipment authorized by the Board. The Business Manager shall assist in the preparation of the Annual Appropriation Resolution, shall appoint and may discharge, subject to the confirmation by the Board, noneducational employees, except as provided in Division B of Section three-three thirteen point three-one of the Ohio Revised Code, and shall prepare and execute all contracts necessary in carrying out this section.
Was this description
That is-
specific to-
Yeah, actually, most of the duties that, that a facility, the Director of Facilities were ultimately doing, is what falls under that. I'm looking for the other statute. See if this is the- Under three-three-nineteen point oh-three-one, notwithstanding any provision of Revised Code, to the contrary, if the Board of Education of a city, local, or exempt village school district does not appoint a Business Manager under Section, thirty-three-nineteen point oh-three of the Revised Code, the Board may assign powers and duties specified in that section to one or more employees or officers of the Board, including the Treasurer, and give the employees or officers any title recognizing the assignment of the power of duties. I'm not seeing the statute that I'm looking for.
What is the stat- you know what, uh-
It's gonna be probably thirty-three-oh-one or thirty-three-nineteen-oh-four, four-oh-three.
Well, um, the men, the powers and duties or are you looking at?
No, powers and duties is what I read. One of them stipulates that, uh.
Who they report to?
Yes. That's the one I'm looking for.
Um, it just in thirty-three-nineteen, in the discharge of all official duties, the business manager may be directly responsible to the board or to the superintendent of schools, as the board directs at the time of appointment to the position. Where such business manager is responsible to the superintendent, the business manager shall be appointed by the superintendent and confirmed by the board. No Board of Education shall appoint or confirm as a business, as business manager, any person who does not hold a valid business manager's license issued under Section thirty-three-oh-one-point-oh-seven-four of the Revised Code. If the business manager fails to maintain a valid license, the business manager shall be removed by the board. Is that the one?
Thirty-three-nineteen-point-oh-three, yes. I disagreed that we would need to know who they report to before the position is discussed.
Oh, no, I think discussing, absolutely. Posting, we wouldn't wanna post or advertise.
Oh, no, 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 we're not, tonight, uh, we've got another issue, so I'm not saying that we're gonna make a decision on this tonight.
I would think we might need to.
Well, we're gonna have to have a meeting. As, as we were notified of, of the request on the challenge to speak, the clock's gonna run out at the end of the month on that, and the board's obligated to address that, to answer that request. So that's gonna necessitate a meeting either next week or the week after.
Due to the fact that we suspended the policy, we would be obligated to have the conversation, right?
Uh, speak was challenged before we suspended, so yes.
Right, and a recommendation, or a recommendation was given to us from the superintendent, so it would be up to us whether or not to accept that challenge.
That's why we will have to have, we're gonna have to have a meeting. I anticipate that we will make this decision, like I say, next week or the week after.
So as.
I wanted to check with everybody's availability.
So as it relates to the discussion on the table around a business position, you're saying that you're not anticipating a decision to be made tonight?
Well, we could make one tonight, but I wasn't anticipating.
Okay, clearly, the Ohio Revised Code allows for both a business manager position to report to the board, as well as a facility position, as we had created, to report to the superintendent. So I, I would ask that we maybe start the conversation around why the consideration for a change?
The consideration for a change is so that, uh, a more expanded job title, job description. I'm not, I'm not sure. Some of the functions that Doug did are included. I myself believe that, uh, we've got enough going on. I'd rather our superintendent only have to worry about the education of the kids. It is apparent, if you go through any building here, other than the two brand-new ones, and there's some questions on those, that previous superintendents, and I'm not laying this on Ryan by any stretch of the imagination, there's been, it's been pointed out many, many times that there was a, was research done in twenty-thirteen of fifteen million dollars worth of repairs needed to be done in the district. My question is, why weren't they? Part of it is because the last thing you're gonna think about it if you're the superintendent are those repairs. And Ryan's pulling double duty right now, doing a superb job. However, it would be much better if the only thing he had to worry about was the education of the kids. The day-to-day operation of the district. Ryan's got some reservations as to the reporting. And I've listened to his concerns. I believe that those concerns can be addressed in the structure of the makeup.
Meaning what?
Meaning that an example, an example given was, it's snow day. Who makes the determine, who has the, the overall authority to call a snow day? Is it the guy that's in charge of the buses, which is the business manager, or is it superintendent? My hope is that there wouldn't be competition, and I don't believe there would be. However, we can address that day-to-day activities. The superintendent overrides the business manager. So if it's, if it's a snow issue, then he's got last word.
But, okay, so here, I guess, here's the. Mr. McLean, one second, please. So, uh, then if the superintendent would, would potentially override what this person would do anyway.
If there was a conflict.
Right, so.
It should be a dual, a dual.
But any, anytime that there's a conflict, as long, if, if we get to defer to the superintendent, then, then there would be, I mean, it would, it would behoove the potential business manager position to only kind of go along with whatever the superintendent said, so it wouldn't, wouldn't that be also then about the board, like? How, how would that work? I, I suppose that some of my concerns, Mr. President, have to do with, uh, our ability to be efficient as well as, listen, I'm a big fan of asking the superintendent to focus on education and educational. I'm a big fan of that idea. You, you and I often start on, we've had that conversation. I'm a big fan of that idea. I think about the last couple of weeks and what's happened in this district. And the person that I wanna hold accountable to those things is our superintendent. For instance, the bus accident that he referenced in his. I, again, praise Jesus, there was no student on that bus. And certainly, that bus driver has been in my thoughts and prayers since that moment. I myself have not seen the video of that incident, but I understand it was pretty traumatic, to say the least. And while it, it certainly would be clean to be able to say, well, okay, Mr. Superintendent, you don't deal with that situation, our business manager will deal with that situation. I have a hard time understanding where the line would be drawn if, you know, from a staffing standpoint, uh, I would assume that that would still be under the superintendent's purview from a student's.
No, it wouldn't.
So then we have some confusion on that then because.
No, if it's educational, it goes to the superintendent.
So bus drivers would have a different.
Pardon?
So bus drivers would have a different person that they would, a reporting structure themselves?
Yeah, the business manager.
And then.
Non, you know, non-educated, or noneducational employees fall within the business manager's definition under the ORC.
So food service, maintenance, bus drivers.
Yes.
Custodians.
Custodians.
Secretaries, yes. Basically, the board's responsible.
Educational aides?
Secretaries, well, for those departments. If it's a secretary, it's the Director of Transportation, that would be under the business manager. What was your question, Steve?
My next question was gonna be of our ad hoc committees. We have had one ad hoc be successful, uh, since those launchings. I'm, I'm not saying that all the ad hocks haven't been working steadily towards accomplishing the goal for which they were established. Uh, but the one ad hoc that has accomplished their goal of, of their intended purpose has been the hiring of the superintendent, the superintendent search ad hoc. Uh, we still, I don't know what's going to happen now with Sherry leaving, but we still have a treasurer, uh, ad hoc standing because our current treasurer is in interim.
Correct.
So I, I worry a little bit about our efficiency as it stands in terms of accomplishing what we need to accomplish for the hiring of, uh, of personnel. So if we would add another one, that would seem to add another layer of complexity for us. Where right now, we have a pretty streamlined structure. Also, um, I certainly concur with you in reference to the needs that need to occur in this district around, um, our facilities. We have older facilities that need significant upkeep. I, and I don't know that world nearly as well as you do. I do defer to you on that. But as the other part of that ad hoc committee, the conversation around even, um, accomplishing some of those goals, when I consider our other leg of the stool being our finances, I don't even know what we would be doing. We got by with a Director of Facilities and Mr. Schwartz in building two brand-new buildings. I don't see us building those buildings or more buildings in the near immediate future. So if we were able to accomplish our goals under that structure, I also don't see a compelling need to change that structure.
When in the grand scheme, is the inability to focus on buildings and the necessary repairs really the issue, or is money?
Both are good questions.
Issue on what, the repairs?
The facilities.
We're gonna have to stretch dollars? Yes.
I don't think we can stretch fifteen million.
Good, well, I'm not gonna talk about what's in the past. I believe that there's a need for a business manager's position.
I, I will not argue that. We, we, we need someone in that office. You can call them business manager, you can call them Director of Facilities, you can call that person Director of Operations, you can call that person an astronaut. I, I don't, I don't care what the title is. We without a doubt need someone, uh, in that position. Um, but I, and I'm gonna bring up some things and probably ask you some questions that you and I have already asked, just for public transparency. Uh, I, I understand you want me to focus on education, and I understand the desire to take some things off of my plate. But by having that person report directly to the board complicates my job and makes my job, uh, less efficient. Um, you know, we, we started with the snow day, um, and, and we've had this conversation, you know, who, who makes that call? And, and I do because it's an educational decision, but by making that, you're, you're creating a new third of our district. So the Director of, uh, Administrative Services, our Transportation Director, no longer reports to me. So is he going to call me, or is he gonna call the business manager on a, on, when the roads are bad? Then the business manager has to call me, and then I have to call him back, and he's gotta call the Transportation Director back. It, it doesn't, it's not gonna make things efficient. Um, you know, I, I, I asked you this question. So if there's an issue, a parent has a complaint with a bus situation, and they call the Transportation Office, and they don't, they don't get the satisfied answer, who, who do they call?
They call the business manager.
They call the business manager, but in reality, who are they going to call? They're going to call, they're going to call me. And, and if, if I then say, hey, I don't deal with that, you've gotta call the business manager, I am going to rightfully so get lit up by this community on Facebook. Because that won't, that wouldn't be acceptable to me if I was a parent. That would look like I'm passing the buck, and I'm gonna be put into a situation where I have to pass the buck because I have no authority over that section because that person reports to the board. You know, purchases, right now, I confer with our treasurer. Do we have enough money to do this? And he'll tell me, yes or no. And if we do, then, then we make that decision to make a purchase or not make a purchase. So like, what would that look like? Do I, I, I would imagine I'm gonna still ask him if we, we have the money. But if I wanna make a curriculum purchase, I wouldn't be the purchasing agent anymore. I've gotta ask permission from the business manager, correct?
No.
Why, I can't make the purchase.
Why can't you?
The appropriation of funds.
And the, the statute permits the business manager to establish uh, appropriations for his branch of the school district.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay.
Not for, if it's educational, it stays with the superintendent. You'll end up with, uh, two departments creating appropriations, and all three have to sit down, including the treasurer, to get the full appropriation. There, the reporting to the board is the hangup. But the authority for that position really needs to come from the board. So that we, we, we had a facilities director for how many years? And I'm not blaming you because you weren't in the driver's seat. But this, but that tiered system, the, the, I don't see it working. And it, it's nothing reflective on you, Ryan, it's on.
I, I, I get that, but it is.
But it's not, because let's say, let's say that he says you only have ten thousand dollars. And as the education portion, you need, say, fifteen thousand for it and a repair to, to something in the district. The ten thousand dollars is gonna go to the education. The, the sidewalk in front of this building that's needed to be replaced for years isn't gonna get fixed, that's the five thousand. That's why we've ended up with fifteen million dollars worth of stuff. In my opinion, everything's on the back burner, if it can be, purely by the structure of how it's being handled.
I, I can't, I can't speak to what happened.
No, I, I agree.
But, but what I can tell you is, we meet as an administrative team, all of the, all of the department heads, all of the directors, we meet every two weeks.
Yep.
And they, I, I fill them in on what's going on. It's more important for me to sit and listen to the issues that they have in front of them in their departments. And, you know, Doug Schwartz would tell me, hey, we've, we've got this issue. We've got, uh, we've gotta replace the water main over at Beatty. We've gotta replace this, this, and this. And obviously, we, we do not have the money to do that, but you, you hired me to, to run this district. So I, I, I signed up for this. Like, I willingly came to Big Walnut. I, I, I wanted this job. So I need to make those hard decisions because we can't afford to fix this, 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 and this, and do the other things that we wanna do. I mean, we've got a lot of people pulling double duty. We are down four district-level administrators this year. We, we, we had two people in the position of academic achievement, and we've got none. So I, I am not the only one that's picking up the slack. This is a collective effort. But you hired me to run this district and make the, the tough decisions, and I wanna be able to do that. If, if I'm just gonna focus on education and I'm gonna have no say on facilities, I don't, I'm not gonna have the final say on facilities. I'm not gonna have the final say on safety and security of our buildings. Like, that, that is, I, I, I don't know what to say. And again, I, I feel like I've been as transparent with you, you collectively as a board. I, I have never not returned a, a phone call, I have never not returned a text. Uh, Mrs. Graziosi asked, uh, she, she felt it was important, and I did not disagree, uh, that a board member be involved in the interview process, uh, for our Director of Academic Achievement. That's a district-level position. I welcomed that, she was a part of that process. I've included you, I've not, I've not kept you in the dark. So, uh, I, I understand from perhaps past experiences, but I, I have, I have no control over that, and I've not done anything, um, to, to cause that. And, and again, I, I get and I appreciate where you're coming from, that you think you're making my job easier, you're making my job more difficult, you are making my job less efficient, and it is going to really limit the progress that we can make in this district of educating our kids.
Well, you, you. This was the discussion that we had before you came on, you knew I was gonna create this position.
And, and, well, that, that is not what you said. And, and well, that, that is not what you said.
Pardon?
That, that was, that was not what you said on that, the day, the day after you offered me the job.
That I wanted to create a business manager's position for this district.
That, that's different from what you just said. You, you told me you were interested. You didn't tell me you were going to create this spot. You asked me, what are your thoughts on this? And I said, I would learn more, I would like to learn more about it.
I think by way of, of also trying to do some research on this, I, by my, so I reached out to the president of OASBO, the Ohio Association of School Business Officials. Like so, you know, school board members have an association, superintendents have an association. I reached out to the CEO of OASBO. And, and I think you and I found the same information back in terms of knowing one district that has this. Here's, here's a little anomaly that we're gonna put into public record, I guess. Dayton Public Schools is the only district that I can find that has it and it's Dr. David Lawrence is that director or that um business manager. The reason I share that right now is I'm, if I try to find out other districts that follow this model, I can find eighteen superintendent or treasurers in this, this state that are currently look, or districts that are currently looking to hire a superintendent or treasurer. I don't see any in the state that are looking to do something around the lines of a business manager. I recognize that Ohio Revised Code allows us to do that. I don't know that just because they allow us to do it, that it's the best thing for us. And in my opinion, the longer that we wait on having this decision, I know you wanted to have it last month, to be honest. I know the longer we wait on making this decision and having something out there, the longer that sidewalk is going to go unfixed or, and the other issues within this district will go unsolved. I personally didn't have an issue with the way the structure worked before. I think that the transparency and faith that I have in our current superintendent is of transparency and faith and expectation that I expect to have in our superintendent moving forward. So if we were able to accomplish the building of facilities under that model, then I would expect our current superintendent to be able to do that and more now.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just feel like the education uh goals and facilities, safety, all of it is so interconnected. I mean, you cannot separate safety of our students, safety of our staff from educational outcomes. You cannot separate facilities from educational outcomes. I mean, all of those things, you know, the temperature of our buildings, whether we have heat or the AC is broken or there's water dripping or any of those things, those have an impact on education. And we have one budget in this district and we have to take that pot of money and we have to make sure that we are doing the absolute best across the board to meet the goals of this district and this community. And you know, we always try to put, you know, make sure that we are considering education and that's probably why a lot of the facility stuff has kind of been put on the back burner because we were dealing with other urgent issues. You know, we had a facilities committee who, I mean, it was brought up, you know, over the years of this is the list of all of the repairs, the buildings. I mean, we often heard like this year alone just, you know, repairing or um, you know, doing uh asphalt work is gonna take X number of dollars and, and our um, you know, improvement bond, what is it? A million a year?
A year over.
Right. So we have a very limited funds to do that. You could put anybody in that position and if they don't have any money to get the work done, you're not gonna get that work done. I, I find it, like, I trust Ryan and, and what he is saying. And I agree that it would just make his day-to-day job just that much more difficult. He is the face of this district. He is who people are gonna call. He is who people are gonna go to. They expect him to make the call.
Sherry, you bring up several good points, one, one of which is this, I, I referenced the bus situation. I didn't even think of it from a broader perspective of safety. We had a facility director when we sat down with our superintendent and established his goals. One area where all five of us are in firm agreement and we made as much progress in the nine months that he's been here than in the two years prior to that is safety. We all agree on the topic of safety, I think, in terms of some of the things that need to be done and some of the actions that we've taken. We made those a superintendent goal at a time when we still had a facility manager. Like that wasn't something that we were placing on the feet of somebody else. I expect the safety of this district and the students to be laid at the feet of our superintendent, not somebody else. And, yeah, and, and that, when, when and if the worst were come to come to pass, it, it's not gonna be a business manager who's standing in front of cameras. The, the person that I will hold accountable for the safety of students and staff in this district, regardless of another position, is our superintendent. Introducing somebody else into that equation only exacerbates the concerns that we all have with safety to begin with, in my opinion.
I have a couple of questions or just to clarify about this uh building, um, excuse me, the business manager position. Ryan says yes, he'd like to have one. Mr. Crowell, you've spoke about this position for a while. We are down a facilities director.
Correct.
Ryan is busting his butt. I don't, Mr. Fuji seems to be in favor of this position. I think what we're questioning is who, and correct me if I'm wrong, who is this person responsible we'll be reporting to? But what we're, what we need to think about is, do we need to talk about and can we legally vote to have this position and then decide who they are, sorry, who they are reporting to?
What a great, that's a great process question. And I think, Mrs. Graziosi, we currently have the position unless we change the position.
Yeah. And that position is facilities director or
Correct.
Business manager.
Let's just call it Mr. Schwartz's old position.
Yes.
Uh, so we currently have the position. If, if we were looking to create a new position, which certainly the reporting, if we change the reporting structure, it would change inherently the position. Then it would need to be a new job description, which would then have to be a vote. Right now, if we were to uh allow the superintendent to post the position as is, it wouldn't necessarily have to be a vote.
So help me, sorry, I had surgery this week, so you can just help me uh clarify this. So with this, in this ORC, in this business manager position.
The ORC permits us to have a business manager that reports to us.
Yes.
Mr. Crowell was, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, to the board or to Mr. The superintendent in here. Is that's what I'm reading?
That's my understanding. Is that right, Mr. Crowell? Yes, you can have it either way.
So at this time, do we need to nail down who they are reporting to? Or because in this business position, they would be taking on some more roles.
I, I, I think, and only because I've heard Mr. McLean say it in the past. I think the only thing that he's waiting on to post the position is to know if it's, if the structure of it would change. Otherwise, he would have posted it as we acknowledged the resignation of the previous holder in that job.
Well, in my opinion, we need to make a decision on this. We can have kicked the can down the road long enough. I would like to uh make a motion for the position of the manag- uh business manager position, reporting to the superintendent.
Second. Well, debate on that issue is we don't have to advertise it as a business manager and they wouldn't have to have the additional licensing because what you want is what you had, which is a facility, uh director of facilities.
I, like I said, I'll advertise, we can have that discussion to advertise it as a business manager. I'm not trying to pull a fast one.
No, I, I'm saying we don't have, if what you're wanting is what you had, then just go, we don't have to create a business manager's position. Just advertise for a director of facilities and leave it the way it is.
So that we would remove our motion and second.
So I would like to remove my motion.
I will second that and second my removal as well. I actually don't know how that works. I can look it up if you need me to, Darren.
So that takes care of twelve ten.
Wait, have we made a motion?
No, there was, there was a we had a second on twelve ten, did we not, Darren?
I have down that we had a motion and a second by Mr. Fuji to have a conversation about twelve ten.
Yes, which we just completed in thirty-five minutes. So we can vote on, do we need to make a vote?
I, I'm, I'm feeling like there's no need for a vote on that if it's gonna remain the same job description that we presently have.
Darren, how do we address it?
Well, we can, it, the, what I'm hearing you say, so you need to correct me if I'm wrong.
There's no action under twelve ten.
Right. And, and the discussion yielded no action and the consensus of the board was that uh we're going to move forward with a facilities manager's position.
Uh, director of facilities. So, so no action is needed. Moving on to twelve eleven is recommended the board approve the twenty-three, twenty-four staffing plan.
Submit.
Second.
I'm just catching up, guys. We have a, a motion by
Sherry.
Yeah, okay. And a second by Angie, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Wayne, can you, can you blow that up a little bit more?
This, this is what you sent us.
Correct, just for the audience, please.
Okay, so I, I added some positions, but the first three technically are not ads because they were positions that existed that we just have not filled. So at a district level, the one director of academic achievement, which was formerly two positions. So that's actually a net negative one. Uh, that, that's gonna be Mr. Robertson. Uh, I, I'm proposing we, we add a communications coordinator. There was one in this position that was hired through the E S C. Uh, I would be looking to hire all of these positions through the district and not the E S C. Uh, and then the one business manager slash director of facilities because I had no idea how the conversation was gonna go this evening. So um, again, that's a replacement, not an ad. All of the following are, are ads. Um, and what I do wanna point out is uh the previous staffing plan uh that was presented to you, I believe February of twenty twenty-two, which was part of the ten-year staffing plan, called for the addition of, I wanna say, uh forty-two or forty-four positions. Uh, we are, and, and part of that was, that plan was to reopen one oh five Baughman Street. So uh there, there were gonna be significant adds there. With us not doing that, uh right now, we are looking at adding uh fifteen positions. Um, so total cost analysis, this is gonna be about one point five million dollars less uh than what was originally proposed to you in twenty twenty-two.
I'm sorry, just, because we're talking about, so we're putting those up together. So that one point five million dollars less is also what was calculated in the five-year forecast.
Correct, correct. Um, so that, this should have a positive impact financially on the five-year forecast. Uh, again, this isn't gonna account for fifteen million dollars, but uh we are looking at what we need um for our kids, what we need as a district to function properly uh and being as fiscally responsible as possible. So uh the assistant food service director, the rationale behind that is Tim Wagner is in charge of transportation and food services. I can tell you that ninety-five percent of his job is transportation. If there's a transportation issue, that is always going to take priority. Uh, and as a result, our, our food service department is not getting the attention it needs. No, through no fault of Tim's whatsoever, uh just a, a lack of assistance.
Would that position come out of the general fund or would that position come out customarily in this district? When we've hired positions in food service, they've been paid for out of revenue in food service. Would that position come out of the general fund or would that position come out of food service?
As it's proposed, it would come out of oh oh six, which is the food, food service. Yeah, and, and at this point in time, um, the current balance of that account could support that position. If, if at such time in the future it can't, then we'll have a conversation about how to do it, but right now, we can do it.
And, and the other, and the last one is uh an additional administrative assistant that would also serve the facility director, uh as well as some other duties or other needs around the district. And, and the one thing I wanna remind the board of, uh similar to the uh staffing plan that I shared with you, I believe it was September or October, uh thi- this is for the year. So one of the maintenance hires that you approved tonight, uh that was one of the last things from that, that fall staffing plan. So there are fifteen positions here. We're, we're probably going to try to fill most of them, but it doesn't necessarily mean we have to fill all fifteen of them tomorrow. Um, at the high school, one of our challenges, and I think Sophie could attest to this, uh is we've got a large number of students in our study hall because there are not enough electives uh for them to take. And just as an example, uh we have, uh the high schools going through registration and we have a waiting list of over a hundred students for FFA classes and over a hundred students on the waiting list uh for art classes. So if we don't have anything for them, those kids are gonna go to study hall or they're gonna be late arrival or, or early release. So again, if we can find the right person and if the, the demand is still there, uh that's why those positions are there. So we've discussed adding American Sign Language to the high school. I think everyone's supportive of that. So that would be an ad. Uh, social studies is down a teacher compared to the other departments. So we're now getting to the point where we would be looking to add social studies to get that on par with the other departments. The FFA and the art that I just mentioned, uh due to our numbers of students with special needs in our multiple disabilities classroom, uh we would be looking at, at adding an additional intervention specialist uh there at the high school and then an additional educational assistant, uh I believe, to assist with that specialized learning center. Uh, at the middle school, we would be looking at adding an intervention specialist to our, our ED S L C. Uh, and then at our elementary currently, we have two counselors that service our four buildings. Uh, and it's Murphy's Law. Uh, when they're at one building, they're needed at the other and, and vice versa. So by adding two counselors employed by the school district, this would uh ensure that we have a counselor at each one of our buildings, uh K through twelve. We, we would not have one at the preschool. But it, it's really an assistant to our, it will provide assistance to our principals. We do not have assistant principals at the elementary level and for the amount of evaluations and different things that our principals uh need to do uh to run an effective building, it, it helps to have a reliable second person there, whether it's to give a kid a break, give, give an adult a break sometimes. Uh, th- this will, i- i- it's something that, that we need. And then one educate, an additional educational assistant uh in our autism S L C located at Souders. Uh, and then finally, uh, well, not finally, but I think from an educational standpoint, uh, the E L C at Harrison Street, we would be looking at adding two educational assistants. One of the struggles that schools around the country are facing uh is we are seeing behaviors, especially at the younger ages, that we've never seen before. And uh we don't know the cause of it, um, but, but one theory uh that has been shared by some educators, I can't claim that I came up with it, but I, I think it's valid, is if you think about uh the pandemic and the lockdown, we stayed away from everyone. Kids didn't play with one another. Um, and, and you didn't get that interaction and learn how to play with other kids and not punch them in the face. And the more that parents actually work from home, uh whether it's a hybrid schedule or they're just able to work remotely, the need for before school care and after-school care isn't what it used to be. And those were amazing opportunities for kids to be in social And those were amazing opportunities for kids to be in social settings that they're not just getting right now. So I, 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 I don't disagree with the theory, theory that, that might be playing a little bit of a role in why we're seeing the behavior issues that we are. Our E L C needs more support, um, in order to help with, uh, those kids that have higher needs so that the other students, uh, were not taken away from, from their education. Uh, and finally, we would be looking at adding an additional maintenance worker, uh, at some point in the year. Our maintenance staff, I believe we had four people, um, originally. We're, we're now going to be up to, uh, I think, five or six. And we just, it, it's still not enough between the repairs at the buildings, uh, the grass cutting. Uh, the reason we waited until this evening to add the one maintenance worker was because by the time we got it approved, we were getting into the cold weather and it wasn't grass cutting season anymore, so it didn't make sense to add that maintenance worker at that time. Well, I mean, I thought grass was going to start growing, but mother nature has had different plans. But they'll, they'll be cutting grass here in a couple of weeks and, and they need some help. So when people ask, you know, why, why did our grounds look horrible this summer? Why was the grass at G R E overgrown? There, there were a variety, variety of reasons. Um, they sounded like excuses, uh, but there were a variety of reasons and one of those was a lack of manpower. So I'm hoping we're going to do a better job with the overall appearance of our grounds and our facilities because we're going to have a more appropriate workforce, uh, to handle those things. So the single asterisk denotes an actual addition, additional position that didn't exist currently. So like I said, by my math, I believe it's fifteen, uh, positions. And then obviously, based on needs, changes could occur. Uh, i- if we get a student who needs additional support, we may need to add, uh, an educational assistant, uh, depending on, uh, how quickly the houses are being built. Um, next to B W I, uh, we, we could need an additional teacher at G R E. But as always, I will, I will keep you in the loop. I will, uh, reintroduce an updated staffing plan for your approval, uh, if we get to that situation.
Mr. McLean, I have a few questions. You mentioned fifteen positions, they're not all necessarily general fund positions. Uh, food service worker as an example, we learned is not. Want to ask about the FFA. It's exciting to me to hear that we have a hundred students currently on a waitlist for FFA. Have you, uh, communicated that with the D A C C? And if so, uh, has there been any response there? I, I wonder if other schools are seeing this kind of growth or is it just us? And if it's just us, then let's, let's feed that growth.
Yeah, I, I can't speak to what's happening in other districts, I'm not sure. But Mr. Jados has already reached out to D A C C to, uh, share one, our need, uh, the, to let them, let them know of the added interest. Uh, so we are working through that. Obviously, that would be a shared cost. We would not, uh, pick up the full salary amount of that. I'm not sure what the exact breakdown is, but that would not be a full.
But it would fall under that same contract with, or that same agreement with them where it would be a partial cost.
I, I believe so, yes.
So that wouldn't be a full F T E from our perspective either. The art one probably would be, is that's not a shared service anywhere else. Uh, my question is around, uh, so in the same manner of the conversation on food service and the conversation on FFA, art would be a full F T E out of our general fund. In the past, we've received communication support from the E S C of Central Ohio. I was not a fan of how that, that whole thing came to play out. However, is your intent to run communication through the E S C of Central Ohio? Or are you saying that that would be a full F T E from here?
My, my initial thought is hiring it with, within the district.
Thank you. And then the adminis- the administrative assistant, um, in the, at the district level, the conversation or the question there is, is this a association position? Is this a position that you're looking to? Because at the district level, I'm not aware of what contracts fall under that. How would that be characterized?
Yeah, typically, the administrative assistants at the, uh, district level, uh, are, I believe, administrative two contracts, so would not be part of the association.
That all the questions? That's surprising. Darren.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Nix.
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi.
Yes.
Mr. Crow.
Yes.
Discerned?
Yes.
Before we go to thirteen, we need to set a special meeting for either next week or the week after to deal with the, uh, timely request to review speak. And the other topic will be the R F P. I didn't have it done this evening for legal services. What's everybody's schedule?
We're talking the week of March twentieth.
Either, either week, but I think the last week of the month.
Yeah, the last week, spring break, yeah.
So, yeah, it'd be the twentieth through the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-third, I'm available.
Are we looking day or evening?
We're still checking for a day.
Angie, throughout the twenty-third, I'm available.
Evening third is, yeah, I'm available the twenty-third.
Miraculously, never mind.
Say that.
Miraculously, I'm available too. So it's the twenty-third, I will work on a time. Is that all day you're available, evening you're available?
I, I don't.
Is it easier on you, Steve, if it's in the evening?
Preferable in the evening for me.
Steve, you too, Steve? Yes, yes.
So.
It took me a second to register what you asked. It's like, uh, what?
We, we got the day narrowed down, then, then we needed the hour. So six-thirty on the twenty-third. And the topic will be the review of speak and, uh, the R F P for legal services.
And that'll be here?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
No.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm not sure of anything anymore.
You might want to think about moving that.
Well.
Actually, I don't, although I, I say that, but I don't know if, if there's.
Availability is why I, availability is why I did.
Yeah, you're right. We got a date and time, the rest will come.
Thirteen, scheduling the next meeting. The meeting after our next meeting will be on April the nineteenth of twenty twenty-three at six-thirty at the district office. Uh, fourteen. It is recommended the board enter executive session to discuss details relative to security arrangements, emergency response protocols. For the Board of Education, it considers confidential information related to the bargaining plan, specific business strategy, production techniques, trade secrets or personal financial statements of an advocate for economic development assistance or the negotiations with other political subdivisions respecting requests for economic development assistance to consider the employment of an employee or official and to confer with an attorney for the Board of Education concerning disputes involving the board. They're subject of pending or imminent court action under one-two-one-point-two-two with the Higher Rights Code.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, Sheri, you got the second, your last meeting for executive session.
Darren.
Mr. Crow.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Nix.
Yes.
Mrs. Graciussi.
Yes.
Sophie.
Yes.
You're the, yeah.
And we'll take a five-minute recess in between now and then.